A special board meeting for January 6th. We're going to present the agenda. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Thank you. Please be seated. Here you go. Do you want paper? Oh, I'm sorry.
Am I here?
Yeah, yeah, they're here.
All right. Here. I got it.
You can take the roll call, okay?
Bob DePalma?
Yeah, I'm here.
Patty Back?
Yes.
Shelley Kidd?
Here.
Jim Christopher?
Here.
Gina Musarelli?
Happy New Year to everybody. Okay, everybody should have a copy of the agenda for today. It's a one item deal. Are there any questions or comments? And if not, a motion to the business committee?
An option to the business committee.
So, second?
I'll support her.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, okay, it's approved. And there's nothing for public hearing, nothing for presentation, nothing for unfinished business. It's a one item agenda, it's for new business. And much to my surprise, as different than what we had in the past, I think we got about twenty.
Yeah, it was twenty-two.
Twenty-two, is it? Yeah, applications for the staff support function and the deputy treasurer function. So, with that, I think everybody got copies of them, kinda as they came in. I think, oh, past copies, everybody I know. And probably all looked and marked on them. And then, one of the most recent ones came in was, of course, Teresa here in our office, who's been with us for a while and does outstanding work. So, with that, I'm gonna open the meeting to discussion. Is there anything anybody on the board wants to say or comment as we go through this?
I think the first thing that I would like to suggest is, after the last meeting, Shelley and I got to talk for a little bit. And one thing that I heard loud and clear was balancing the books. So, can we propose that we have Ken come in and make sure everything is up to date before this new person starts, so everything can start fresh?
I'm working on it.
Well, oh, no, I know. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I would that, I mean, from what I heard from you, I think that would make a big difference, especially right from the get-go.
Oh, I wouldn't. I wouldn't. Yeah, somebody stirred from behind, though.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Anyone want? Well, I'll make what I think's an obvious comment, okay? I'm just throwing this out, and everybody can consider it. I think we have some very interesting resumes here. There were at least four or five that I thought looked pretty proficient. And then, when Teresa decided to throw her name in there, I have to say, I think Teresa's a known commodity that we've had here in the office. Couple of the primary skills I think she has is she gets along exceedingly well with everybody in the office. We've got a good personality mix, and that's important in a small office like ours, because there's just not a lot of us. She is extremely diligent and proficient, and probably in my entire work career, including the twenty-nine-plus years I had at AT&amp;T, the most competent person I've ever met for taking something, breaking it into its piece parts, and analyzing it. And she has now done with the fire department analysis that I had to do, because that's all finished. And I've never met anybody that could straighten out things as much as she can. She did an outstanding job, not only on the analysis for the fire department runs and the information that we broke down and put together that graphic that really helped make it easier to see what was going on. But she's also did the same thing originally when I tasked her about two years ago, I think it was, for the antenna site building, which was just a huge mess to try and get done. Because I don't know if you know, on that antenna site we have over on the township property, there's really multiple leases on it from multiple people that are involved in giving us some part of the rent. And ways, basically, the way it's done is, originally, the antenna was built by AT&amp;T, and now it's, I forget the name of the company, you get the checks, though.
American Tower.
American Tower, that ended up buying it. And we get the money from them, and there's escalators in there. And then, we had it set up that we get half the rent of anybody else that goes on it. But some of the anybody else's that go on it were done on individual contracts and came directly to us separately. And some of them went to American Tower, and then were included in their payments and break them down. It just became very difficult to evaluate whether or not we were getting all the money we should. And Teresa did an outstanding job on that. And that's frankly, when I realized what a, I think, a pearl person she is for her detail orientation and her ability to do that stuff. And just to throw this in for my two cents, I think whenever possible, whether it's in the fire department or here, we try to promote from within. Teresa had some other goals that she was working on before that she didn't submit originally, but she has decided she wants to now. And I personally think, being that she's such a well-known quality and done such an outstanding job for us on a number of things, I think it should go to the existing employee if she wants to become full-time. So, I'll throw that out there, and now I'll open it up for discussion for any of you that wanna add or say anything else. I'm just, I'm trying to get it kicked off.
Teresa does do a wonderful job, but honestly, I did not consider her, considering that she is Patty's assistant. And that, again, from the last meeting that I had, that's really mingling the clerk and the treasurer's department together, you know, with her doing the payroll and the billing and the elections.
Which is the position that's posted. It's an admin and a deputy treasurer position.
But the timing with her being in the elections also are timings when I do my settlement and have to get the role settled to send it over to the county. And there's, when I'm needing the most, it doesn't seem like I...
So, why, we also look to replace her position, then? So, that would negate that. I mean, we would have to have an elections person.
Oh, right, right. But I'm just saying, with her being Patty's assistant, she's, you know, the assistant to the clerk, it still negates what I was saying before as far as I need a separation. And some of us writing the checks should not also be seen as...
That's what this job defined is.
The checks.
The separation. The deputy position is a fifty-dollar stipend that you can name anybody to. This position is an admin, and you're both clerk, both the clerk and the treasurer assistant. That's what's posted. So, I, yeah.
To that end, I think if your concern is that Teresa is currently working just the election stuff, I'm assuming, I know from talking to Patty, you'd end up using somebody else who would get the help for the election thing, because that's not as long-term. And it would be more in line with the general assistant staff position that we've always had. So, I don't think there's a, and just so, maybe just so reclusive, I mean, misunderstanding, I, I don't think that there would be a problem in her having you, having you use her for those treasure reflections that you need. But there's still the possibility, and it doesn't happen a lot, but I do, from time to time, I've asked Teresa for something, and I've asked God knows Carrie for stuff, and she's really planning the building, but, and when Gayle was here, I even asked her for some stuff. So, I don't do it a lot, but we're a small office, and we just can't have that many extra people around. So, there's always the possibility of something coming up that needs to be done.
But you're not seeing more than...
And the last two people prior to your sitting here did also help in elections and other things.
But I'm talking about doing the payroll and paying the bills, which is the clerk's department that balances it on my end. It kind of...
There's no conflict. She can continue to do the payroll. It doesn't take that much time. And as far as paying the fire bills, it's something I can do, teach somebody else. No, rock it. I will need her help here and there, going through the election for the March anyway, until I get somebody else to pay.
And that's when I might see my, that's when I gotta turn over the county's in March. It's right, I've got like a two-week time to do, and then also settlement and settle the delay of taxes.
The election's over on the tenth of March. So, I think Teresa can do it. I'm fine with that. I'll work it out.
So, more or less, these other applicants didn't, there is no sense for recalling them?
Well, I don't know that I would say that. I know I looked at the other ones. I think everybody looked at them, because you sent them out to us. Teresa's came in late, and, I mean, where's the end? Yeah, I don't mean late.
There were like six or eight of them that came in.
There were several that came in right at the, I should say, at the end, I guess. Okay? And so, frankly, I think typically, had it been decided earlier, I think we would've probably just opted for her to do it. I mean, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but I have absolutely nothing but positive comments on Teresa.
And I'm not complaining about Teresa whatsoever. I mean, I'm really not. You know, I know she does a wonderful job, and she is a dedicated person, you know, of my...
Obviously willing to learn and do new things.
But just the blurring and who to answer to, because I don't want, you know, the...
Nobody has to answer to.
Well, it's kind of answering. It's when I'm needing something, who takes priority? Because, you know, like I said, I've got, on March 2nd is when I have to start sending things over to the county virtually. And then also, I have to get my settlement completed also during that time before the end of the month, and take care of the funds and distribute where they need to go. And again, I'm seeing that with her already being busy with something else, I'm not gonna get much help, is what I'm afraid of, and then...
Well, I guess, let's break this into two different parts. First of all, I've had her spending a huge amount of time digesting the runs from the fire department for a year, stick pinning and all derivative breakdowns of it. That's all done, so I don't need her for that anymore. Other than that, I would think for those things that you would need as a treasurer, she would be, as long as it works out, all right, responding to you for those and doing it. The only caveat I think I'm putting in there is the same one that we've always had. There are needs that come up in the township sometimes ad hoc, and based on those, if they do come up, there may be a case where I have to say, Teresa, I need you to do this for me the next day or two. But I think most of the time, Teresa, and I think Carrie will tell you, I'm usually not that time-sensitive. I rarely give...
I know she used to go to girl that everybody...
But I rarely give her or Carrie or even Gayle, when she was here, something that I had to have done that day. I generally try and tell them, I need this done, but if you're busy, I don't care if it gets done next week, but I need this done. It's rare that I think I say something, and I shouldn't say that, because I know I gave you an email this morning, Carrie, because of a call I got, of something I actually have to have done the day I asked for. But if it does come up, I mean, it's something I have to get done. But that's, it's fairly...
But again, with that, though, when you're probably with Gayle, I have her working on something, and you would ask for her, Patty, you would ask for her to do something, and what I had her working on, that dropped.
Yeah. The only time I did that was once, I think you were gone, and you wanted her to go to a class, and you were shorthanded.
No, it was with that.
Oh, it is, I don't remember.
It was with balance, and wanting to do with a car show, something with that.
My experience at a distance, so to speak, but side by side with Teresa is nothing but excellent.
Oh, I agree.
And when I reviewed the resumes, hers is actually comparable. And what I'm hearing is, as an inside outsider, I guess, is this is a timing issue that I think could probably be worked out just through dialogue within the office. And the fact that we don't have to train somebody to, let's say, that philosophy and chemistry in that office speaks volumes about, yeah, let's give her a try, in my opinion.
And to speak to that, too, I mean, I had, I had mine all, because I looked at them before I left to go see my parents.
I got a number.
And when I got, yeah, and when I got, got the emails, when I was finally able to open them up, she did move to the top of the list for all of those same reasons. But also, we're looking at, I get a critical time as far as elections and settlements, but it's a short time in the long haul of the year. And I really think, you guys, I mean, I really do believe that it can be worked out. And we, you know, we can reach out and ask, what do you think? If you guys, you know, are okay with that. You know, put her on the spot now.
We still need a part-time person in the office. I would still want to get a part-time person. So, that's, that just makes sense, because if Gayle or Teresa's gone and Carrie's gone, we have to have somebody come in to cover and help pick up the slack at the counter and the phones and whatever else.
May I ask, Teresa, what did you say that you were interested in this position?
Well, I've been kind of mulling it around. Since I took another part-time job in a different location this past fall, I've kind of felt like I'm working really, really hard at two different part-time jobs. And after a while, I was like, I would rather focus on one versus the other, and this one is the one that I enjoy the most. So, I do enjoy my time here. I feel like it's, for me, engaging activities. I enjoy the residence. I enjoy pretty much every aspect of the job. I like learning new things. And I find that a lot of what I'm learning, I'm not gonna say it comes easy, but it seems like a good fit for me. So, I've been thinking about it for probably the last month or two. It really wasn't on my radar until the previous person put in their two weeks' notice, because that wasn't even something that I was, you know, looking at.
I approached you about a year ago, and...
Yes, and at that time, I was not looking for full-time work. Things have changed. And within my family situation, and so, it became something that I started thinking about after the former individual put in their notice. But I waited until towards the end of the filing, because I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt the whole process.
I'm, I think we beat it up, but if it's just a timing issue, and we're gonna get somebody else's part-time, and I do, I'd say, give it a try. If it doesn't work out, we can come back in two months. It's just an own quantity.
Okay, but again, though, I mean, until, I guess Patty, unless she takes over on the billing and the payroll, I bet's where my...
Teresa could still do the payroll. There's no...
Is there a big time concern?
No. Well, it's not that it's necessarily a time-consuming. It's my issue, is just with all the training that I've had, it's always been, there needs to be a definition between the departments, just like when Patty and I were going over the new healthcare the other day. And I asked her, I said, well, am I gonna get a login on that? And she goes, no, there's, there needs to be that definition.
There was no reason for you to get one.
Well, but, but that's what I'm getting at, is there's, is it only your decision on whether there should be the definition between the clerk and the treasury? You know, that, that's all I'm getting at. I don't, when someone writes checks, should not be also the same one that's signing the checks and also balancing the books, is what I'm saying. That's, there's no oversight by that way, is all I'm getting at.
I get that. There was consideration to let Laura do payroll when she sat there, and I checked, and there was not a problem with it. I will check again.
Okay. Because that's, that's my thing. I mean, like I said, I think Teresa does a great job, and she's smart as a whip, and, you know, no complaints. It's just the, the position itself is what...
She's administrator assistant, is what she is. And I'll double-check that. I believe she can continue to do payroll.
I'm encouraged that you actually approached her a year ago and asked her, so that speaks volumes to me, you know, that you would be comfortable with her and her, you know, the way she works within the office.
But that's what I'm saying. That's, that's pretty much my issue with the division. That's why I thought of, at the last meeting of the division, because...
So, would you want a deputy, some, the deputy to be somebody different? Since that is a division, separate thing? That's the stipend department?
That's her call.
Yeah, exactly. That's, you know, so that's, that's also, you know, that is your call entirely. So, yeah.
Well, I guess that would be an option until things got straightened around or the duties more separated, you know?
Okay. I don't wanna cut anybody off. I'm just asking, is there any other comments? Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I could make a motion, though, for Teresa's bills, her position at the administrator.
Is there a second today?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? If not, Carrie?
Well, I can, last thing. Like I said, I'm wanting to see things go forward, so as long as Patty can check into it, and, you know. I'll make a review later if needed, but otherwise, okay?
Okay.
All right. And, well...
Okay. I don't wanna cut you off.
All right, and also, Monday's meeting, I would like to be able to appoint a deputy for me, for the time being.
Okay. All right, regular meeting, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I got everybody covered here. Carrie, do you wanna take a roll call, huh?
Appoint a deputy before the next regular meeting?
No.
Yeah, I have a meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's that.
So, that means when you're doing the agenda, you have to put that in as one of the agenda items for next Monday's meeting.
Thanks. Okay. Bob DePalma?
Yes.
Patty Back?
Yes.
Shelley Kidd?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Okay, there are no resolutions, miscellaneous reports, so at this point, are there any public comments? Sure. You done for yourself? Yeah.
My name is Paul Lucas. I live over on Perry Hill Road, just up there. And I've been hearing and, you know, becoming a little concerned about the fire department. I even made a suggestion in the citizen, I don't know if you folks have read it or not. I wanna go on record, first of all, saying, your ideas and my ideas are very similar. It's merely the way we get to them.
I guess, my, my thought was, you were indicating that we didn't, it sounded like you were saying in your first letter that we didn't take, weren't taking care of the buildings, or that we didn't want to give them a raise, when in fact, we've said for about eight or nine months, we plan on replacing station one, because it's about seventy years old. And I am the one that brought forward the study that said, we need to do something about the volunteer pay.
Okay. Well, that's a misunderstanding then. My concern was keeping the buildings up. And I knew that it was older, so I was thinking, maybe it needs a little remodeling.
No.
Maybe the needs have changed. Maybe we need a couple of things, something along those lines.
That building is so old, it's probably past anything we can do for it that would be substantive. Utility costs on it are almost twice what they are at the other building.
Okay.
And this building here was only built and commissioned in 2001, and we put a new roof on it, I think, two years ago, three years ago. It's kept in very good shape, so there's nothing wrong with the building there. That building isn't as good a shape as we can get it. It's just very old, kinda cobbled up, that has three or four heating plants in it. It's extremely inefficient. And we've been saying for many months that we're going to replace it. And I guess I didn't like the inference you made, that is there some special deal that Bob DePalma's getting out of this. Bob DePalma doesn't do deals like that. He's been the supervisor for twenty-four years, and I defy you to find one time I've ever done something that benefited me personally at the expense of the township. The deal on the building is this, we have somebody that's interested in buying it at significantly more than its current appraised value, which will allow us to build a brand-new station by the Mavis building without any out-of-pocket money from the township. I don't get a penny out of that. That's what part of my job is.
Okay. That's a misunderstanding on your part. That's not what I meant.
Well, I'm sure what it sounds like when you read the citizen.
I never accused you of anything. What I said was...
Well, you made it sound like your part.
The way that it was going about gives the appearance that something else is happening.
What is it going about?
So, I guess all I'm looking for is just the alcohol open about it.
And I am. If you watch the videos, for example, which I put out on YouTube, you can get it on the cable channel, you can get it on YouTube, and you can get it sent to you anytime you want, day or night, at your own discretion, because we put it out on all three, you'll see that I clearly said, we must address the volunteer pay issue. On the building, I've been saying it multiple times at various meetings, all you had to do was call and ask. And you may say, that's not what you're saying, but that letter you wrote makes it distinctly look like you're accusing me of, in some sort of backhanded deal on the building on the, that's on Dixie Highway. And that's not the case. So, you may say that, but that's not...
Here's why I said that. I said that because, as far as I know, if you're gonna sell public property, it's gotta go out to the public for sale. I can't, you can't just select a buyer and then go that route.
And you're right, and it will. But what I'm telling you is, I have a buyer that is interested, and I actually have two, and I'm quite confident both of them will pay us more than the purpose of that.
And that's my, that's my major concern.
Well, that, that will happen when we actually go out to bid. And again, I've told the board before, and I've said it multiple times, if you had bothered to check, we are going to get at least two bids on the new building, and we'll put the old building up for sale and see what we can get. But I'm pretty confident, we're not gonna get a better deal than what we've had offered, because I've had three different realtors appraise the building, and all three of them came in with appraisals significantly less than the potential buyer has indicated he's willing to pay for it, which is the only reason we would move it. If we couldn't get enough money to put the new building up, I'll be honest with you, we'd have to stay on that building, because we're not going to put the money in the building ourselves. But that corner is going to be worth a lot of money when that ORV park opens up, and I'd rather have it on the tax rolls, paying taxes, and put our building next to the Mavis Center, the Task Force One building, where we already own the property and it's not paying taxes anywhere.
Where's this Task Force One building?
Straight down Grange Hall Road, behind the power line there, the big blue building that went up.
Okay.
That's got all of the disaster backup stuff from the state of Michigan that's housed here in Groveland Township. And we kinda wanna see if we can keep those kinds of emergency services in the same general area.
Okay. As far as the TV goes, I watched the channel ten minutes ago. I really didn't see anything that answered my question, so that's why I'm here today, number one. Well, number two, now that I've got some of the answers, then here, my apology, if you felt I was accusing you of anything, because it wasn't, I was voicing my concern about it. The appearance was not exactly right, as far as I knew.
I don't know, I don't...
Lastly, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a recommendation, maybe folks can talk about and bring it up next time. I think it'd be a really good idea, if you formed a committee to look into what you can actually do with that building.
How, have that committee to do what with the building?
Well, do we really wanna move, or can we just keep a piece of it and put it in the same footprint as it is? You're saying and telling me now that it's beyond refurbishing, so...
I'm saying, it's sixty or seventy-year-old.
I don't know. I've never even been in the building. I just know it's there. And...
Why wouldn't you want it on the tax rolls?
Again, this is all information that I didn't have. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to a single thing that Mr. DePalma said this morning. But at least I got some more information.
They could all...
I was pouring an opinion without a phone call.
Could've been a phone call, I could do.
I thought it'd be better, since we're having a disagreement, to be face-to-face. It's what kind of...
When I read your letter on the thing that stood out to me...
I don't like making phone calls and then misquoting someone or anything else. Now, we're out in the open, we're talking face-to-face. I think that's just a line that, now we understand each other.
When you spoke about mutual aid, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Because we do have a mutual aid agreement, and I'm gonna tell you, that is the one stick for me in this, is I've, I've seen these firefighters at my own home and how well they work together. I can't for the life of me get one of them to tell me how they can do that, and such an awesome job and work well together, but they don't, they don't want to collaborate on any other. They don't wanna be the same group. Nobody can define exactly what that is. Maybe with what you've heard, you can draw that out a little bit. You know, it's, it seems to be a personality thing, but yet they work really, really well together. There is a amazing mutual aid effort.
Again, I'm in the blind. I would have to see it for myself to make a judgment. I would, I'll throw a guess out there.
Please.
There's a professional side, and they're all professionals, then there's a personal side. And you know, you throw a hundred people together, you're going to find ten that you do not like, for whatever reason. There's no difference.
But when they come together, we're going to get that professional result.
When they have a mutual problem they have to solve, they work very well. But once that's been resolved, they fall back to the personality.
Perhaps you're missing the point of part of what I said. When we were talking about mutual aid, Groveland's never said that we shouldn't be doing mutual aid. We understand the fact, I don't think you can literally refuse to do it if you have people available. What came out of the analysis in the study that was so important is, we are doing a disproportionately large amount of mutual aid to other communities around us that have much bigger tax bases, are in a much better position to afford to take care of their own residents, but are choosing to let us do it at our expense. And so, when we do those aids, and you look at it and you realize that, wow, we have a staff now that handles the same, that handles fifty-eight percent less calls than it did in 2013 with exactly the same staffing and manning, most people would say, if you're doing your job as a business manager, you'd ask yourself, why have we had no associated cost reductions when there's been fifty-eight percent drop in the volume of calls? Your point that those calls are probably medicals, I would agree with you. And again, if you watch the video, you see that I broke down a lot of that information. Roughly speaking, all fire departments track their total volume of service based on the calls they get through nine-one-one. And so, that number that I was quoting, the twenty, two-hundred-and-forty-three, I think it was in 2013, and the nine-hundred-and-fifty that we expected for this year, which actually turned out to be nine forty-eight, are the total number of calls. If you break them down, and Teresa did that for us in our study, you'll find that about half of them are what we would call medical transports. Somebody goes to a hospital. The other half of them are, could be a lift assist for a senior, could be a national structure fire or, you know, fire in the field or what have you. It could be I smell gas. It could be a tree fell over in the road and our guys end up pushing it out of the way. It's all the other things. But the issue is, that's how they measured the total volume. And so, when I look at it, I said, wow, we're doing less than half the volume of calls we were doing, but we haven't changed manpower staffing at all. And then, when I looked at the calls further, she did such a good job on it, we said that even today, with over half the calls gone, one out of five calls that we do today is not even in Groveland Township. And so, I sat there and said, well, from a business perspective, are we spending a lot of money to do other people's runs that really should be staffing their own forces up to be able to do them? And I think the answer to that is unequivocally yes. And the perfect example of that is, almost everybody around here carries roughly one fire station for about six thousand residents. Groveland Township has less than three thousand per fire station. Independence Township has one fire station for every twelve thousand people and one EMS crew for every eighteen thousand people. When you look at that, you start to realize, if they're not staffing adequately, they end up calling either Waterford, who just laid off thirty-nine firefighters, or they called Brandon to their north. And when they call Brandon, it thins out the staff in Brandon to do their runs. And so, we ended up picking up thirty-five runs to Brandon last year out of our department. And I'll bet almost every one of those was going to be a medical. When we look at Springfield Township, they have almost three times the people we have. They don't do any medical transports, and we did sixty-five medical runs down there. Sixty-five. So, when I say what we're looking at, the answer is this: I agree. And that's why I said clearly in the video, if you watched it, we have to address the volunteer pay issue. And that's because NACFA, next door to us, has raised it to higher than anybody in the area and probably what it should be. And we are the lowest. So, I'm not trying to skirt it, even though I think that's what your article indicated, that we'll see if he does it. That's exactly why I brought, I don't bring problems to the board and then say, hey, I just want you guys to know we got a problem. I don't think we need to do anything about it. That's not been my record for twenty-four years. Okay? So, we need to fix that issue. The question is, how do you fix it? Some people have just said, just raise the taxes and charge them more, and that's, who cares? We love the way they do it, don't change anything. I think as a manager, that's a terrible approach. I think the raising taxes should be the absolute last alternative that you look at when you find out if there's nothing else you can do. And so, the issue is, we know we have a problem with the cost for the volunteer firefighters, but we also know we're doing significantly less volume, and because we have so much surplus staff, we have other people that are in a much better position to fund their own services using us so that they don't have to. And that's not right. It's not right to have Groveland Township, one of the smallest townships left in the entire county, footing the bill to take care of runs to other communities because they don't want to pick up the tab.
I agree. That's why one of the things that this committee could do is do a study for you, get you some numbers, get you some facts.
That's what we-
Maybe recommendations. Maybe what you need to do is find-
That's exactly what we need.
All I'm saying is, I'm trying to support you. Get a committee going. Take one person from the fire department, so you've got that going.
We've been working with the fire chief all along, and I have one person from the board who's been with me on everything for a year that we've been analyzing, everything she's done. We have done exactly what you said. That's how we got these details and data. Now, what we're trying to figure out is, what is the best way to try and fix that? Because I agree, it has to be fixed one way or the other, but you can't just, I don't believe the answer is, you're doing fifty-eight percent less work, let's just raise the taxes and that's how we fix it. I just don't think that's the solution.
No, that's not right. That doesn't make any sense.
And that's what I've been saying.
Why should you spend all your-
To take care of somebody else.
Resources for something else.
When they have three times the tax base.
They're basically taking advantage of us.
And that's exactly what the study was.
So, what I'm saying is, let's do something about it. Let's get a committee.
That's what the board does.
Make some recommendations.
That's what the board does. You say committee, but we've had, I've worked with Jim now for a good year.
I'm reluctant to use the word because you folks have already got more than enough to do. Let's organize.
No, that's what our-
Carry a little water, too.
That's what our job is, doing that.
Very, very close to final recommendations.
Okay.
Certainly within the next sixty days, probably.
I mean, we're here today to make a suggestion.
It's great.
And we're all trying to do the same thing. I'm just suggesting maybe a whole other different road to get to the same place.
And I understand, if we had had this discussion, I think you probably wouldn't have written the letter, but it's unfortunate that you did.
Probably wouldn't have.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess we-
I asked Teresa to pull the board out for you, and you can look at it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
I have a question.
Sure. Her name, please.
Hannah Davis. I'm at thirteen-on-one Holton Trail.
Okay.
Now, I don't know how the calls come in, or does each area have their own-
You mean the emergency calls?
Yes.
Okay, all of the emergency calls come in down to the Oakland County nine-one-one dispatch center that the sheriff manages.
Okay.
And it's in that complex, you know, down at Telegraph and Dixie.
Yes.
Okay. One of the buildings there has the nine-one-one dispatch center for everybody out here. The calls come in there, and then based on where the call came from, that dispatch center roots it to whoever the appropriate fire department is. In the case, let's say if you were here in Groveland, let's say we have mine, okay, on Groveland Road, and I call nine-one-one, it would light up, they'd know where I am, they'd say that's in Groveland, that goes to the Groveland Fire Department, and they would automatically page out the fire department on that call, and they'd know where to go. And the firefighters get that call, they have an application on their phones that does a GPS lookup automatically. So, if it's to a house that they're not familiar with, or a road they're not totally familiar with, it actually GPSes them right to the location while they're driving. So, that's how they get there. In the case of mutual aid, what happens is, the first opportunity is the call always gets reverted down to the fire department that's in the local area that handles it. If that fire department doesn't, because nobody can predict when calls are going to come, you know, we have days where we don't get any calls at all, and then we have days you might get four or five, right? We average about two-point-four calls a day of any kind.
Okay.
Okay, but if you had a case where we had, let's say there was a accident on M-15 and everybody was tied up on that, and they couldn't answer that medical call that came in next, the chief then has a method where he automatically tells them, do mutual aid, and tells whoever it is he wants to cover. And mutual aid, it could be, if you had one in your own department, you wouldn't call it, you'd send your station there, but if you didn't, it would depend where the person was. If you were on that side of town, they would probably call for mutual aid from Brandon because they've got a station or two there that's fairly close to us also. If it was on this side of town, it could end up being the North Oakland Fire Authority or it could end up being the Village of Holly, the two that are closest to us there. So, that's how they get done. The chief has to, on a medical mutual aid, the chief has to actually specifically say, I can't make that run right now, we're all tied up, give it to so-and-so. That's how it gets done.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I just, what I'm hearing is a lot of citizens don't want that done. And the volunteer fire department, they don't want it. Can't you, I'm sorry, because I don't-
You're doing fine.
Can't the nine-one-one dispatch be retrained to? I'm sorry, this is-
There's protocols they have to follow.
Okay. They don't give it to just anybody. They give it always first to the fire department in the area. Here's something that might be of interest to you. For decades, for decades now, all of our Groveland Township residents that happen to live in that lower southwest corner of the township that's just on the other side of the expressway, they've all been handled by the North Oakland Fire Authority all along. They pay taxes to us, which frankly are higher than NACFA's, but they're actually serviced by NACFA, not us. And it's been that way for decades. All of the buildings along Dixie Highway where you start to cross into, into Holly Township that are on this side in the Renaissance Festival, which is actually really in Holly Township, not Groveland, for decades has been handled by our fire department. And they pay the taxes to NACFA, but we're doing the runs on it. That's why I said, one of the things I think that has to be addressed is, when we look at it, why does the smallest township left in Oakland County have one out of five runs not even in our township? That's how much we're doing for other people through mutual aid and stuff. So, I think what Paul realized as we discussed this, we are being utilized by other people to take care of their stuff, and they all have much bigger tax bases than we do and could handle that themselves if they chose to. You know, human nature is kind of, you take, that's the easy way out. And so, if you can get somebody else to do it for you, I guess you let them do it and you don't have to spend the money. It's true that people pay for a medical run. We all do. If you get billed, you know, you have to go to the hospital. But what I'm telling you is the cost that you pay on an ambulance run is not the full cost of providing that service. And so, the idea, I think if you actually look at the calls that Groveland has in Groveland Township, it's probably about seven hundred a year. There actually are. Because we did nine fifteen, if you take twenty percent of them out, you're going to be around seven hundred calls roughly, okay? Seven hundred calls works out to less than two calls for service a day. Not two medical transports, two calls a day. That's the load that we really have here, and that's why frankly, for years, this township handled all of our services out of one station. The principal reason we built the second station was, we wanted to try and get an ISO reading from the insurance companies that would drive our homeowners' insurance down. And it did. And this station, we took the advantage of saying, we're, we're buying the station and putting it in where we think the ideal position is to be able to reach the majority of our residents within its service operating area. And that station really covers about eighty-five percent of the whole township in its service area. This station is here because, when the fire department got started and it needed a commercial building, if you look around, there's almost no commercial buildings in Groveland Township. You either had to park somewhere on M-15 and beat these mall, I guess, I don't know, or even bought the building that was originally, I think it was the, one time I think it was the Oakland County Sheriff, and I think when we got it, I think it actually came from the Road Commission or the other way around. So, that's how we got the building there. And it's, if you look at it, if you were starting with a fresh sheet of paper day one, and you wanted to locate two stations in Groveland, I can guarantee you, that would have been a good location for one of them. It could, we probably would have put it farther north, if I had to guess. But it is where it is now. It provides a service. We have extra service. We understood from the first time we looked at this, the residents liked having a second station, and we said, all right, we're not going to eliminate this, this second station. We think we need it. The question becomes, how do you staff it and how do you handle the calls? And which calls do you really want to handle? I think that when you look at a fifty-eight percent drop in the volume of calls, you have to ask yourself, there's got to be something, you've been doing things better. And that's what we're looking at. And we're aware that the fire department, you know, there's a kind of a camaraderie among them. We haven't made the final decision. We're pretty close. We've got a few more things we've got to check. But I think Gina's brought up a good point. We need to understand, why is it so hard not to want to do it when it looks like there would be some, we think, some advantage? Now, to that end, the North Oakland Fire Authority is giving us some kind of a proposal here shortly, and the fire department chief Mason's going to give us another alternative proposal where he thinks we need to go. And from my discussions over the holiday here with him, I'm pretty encouraged by what he said. But I, I think what's happening here is, we're seeing people that are on a pure emotional basis saying, don't even ask a question, just raise the taxes, we don't care. That's fine. And I think that's a bad business decision in not doing our due responsibilities to the population at large. We have an obligation to understand what we're doing and why we do it, and we have an obligation to look at any alternative that might look viable to see if that's the right one. And that's all we're doing.
Okay. There is a division in Oakland County, the Medical Control Board, and they keep track of all of the emergency runs in, I think it's thirty-nine different hospitals and fire stations now in the county. But they have a protocol, and it's open to everyone. You can get on the website and see it. And that will tell you how things happen and what is expected, and then what they keep track of as a result. How long did it take you to get to that person? How long did it take you to get from there to the hospital? Were they viable when they got to the hospital? All of those kind of things. Also, know that they have to approve any decision that we make. So, and it is based on those protocols. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Anything else you'd like Monday?
I have a quick one.
Sure.
Nicole Taliber, seven-two-zero-one Perryville Road. Our millage rate is three-point-eight-zero-zero-four right now?
Something like that.
Three-point-eight.
Okay. If we join NACFA, what is Holly's and what is Rose Township's currently?
The estimates so far, and I'll see it when I get to final presentation, but everything we've looked at has been to bring it back down to the three-point-five bills that will be paid for many, many years.
So, is that what their millage is right now?
Holly pays three-point-five and Rose pays, I think, about two-point-one roughly. And the reason Rose pays less is, the way NACFA runs their operation is, they currently bill anybody that's in the North Oakland Fire Authority a fee for doing fire services. And that fee is whatever the dollar amount that the board that manages them agrees it will be for the next year. And I believe, I believe that Holly's three-and-a-half mills is kind of paying what that fee is. Don't hold me to this, but I think it's six-hundred-and-eighty thousand this year. And in the case of Rose, they have a bigger state equalized value, so their two mills generates more money than two mills would in Holly, but their millage is now not covering their fee. So, their treasurer, who was the past supervisor, told me point-blank, I told them before I put in supervisor, we're not getting enough money to pay the fee, we're going to have to raise the millage. So, I know that Rose Township's got to go for a millage increase because the two mills are two-point-one, whatever it is, is two more.
Okay, so basically the monies have to match, since it's, it would be three.
Yeah, if it was three, I'm assuming that-
Everybody's millage would have to be the same, or state equalized value would have to equal what the other two parties are putting in, correct?
Your fee, they, the really, the way they do it, they, they don't care how you get the money.
Right.
They say, if, if it's 700,000, it's 700,000 from everybody.
Okay, so they each have one station, we have two stations, currently our millage is higher. Um, if we go in with them and we, and they're funding two, just each one station, and we have two, what's to say they won't shut one of our stations down because the money has to all be equal?
Well, here's, here's the issue, I think. When you look at it, there's a lot of calls we're doing that are actually in Holly. And so, they have more calls coming into the Holly area now than they were. Uh, it's conceivable, and I don't know this yet, but it's conceivable, the answer might be that that station we have over there ends up not necessarily being manned all the time, but being manned based on what the traffic load is. You could make a case where you could take a good swipe of the traffic that we have today that is really not even in Groveland Township, have it handled by NACFA, whether they wanted to use the station we have there or their own station to do it, but in, in essence, be handling it that way. And so, the question also becomes, and you have to look at some records to determine this, are their runs going out at exactly the same time when our runs are going out? I wouldn't suggest that's highly unlikely, there's just, there's too many random variables in it. So, it becomes a case where you might say, Groveland Township can probably handle, you know, don't hold me to this, I'm just doing this by way of example, maybe 90% of the calls that come out in Groveland Township could easily be handled by one station, the ones that are in Groveland, okay? And maybe Holly can handle 90% of the calls that are actually in there. And what happens is for the 10% where you might have a multiple case, we might back them up, or they might back us up, or that third station went demand on those times when it tends to need most traffic, and back either one of them up. And in that scenario, that station kind of becomes servicing both entities up and down the Dixie corridor.
Okay. Right, I just know that's a concern, that, you know, we would lose a station.
And, and we're, we're well aware of it. And so, we've said, we're not going to lose station two, and, and I can tell you right now, when we do talk back with NACFA for that price, I'm, I don't know any other way I can say this except to be emphatic, we need station two for a couple of reasons. It's not just the fire station, it's the state police detachment center, so it has to be there anyway. Putting a fire station on it is not that big a deal, and it has to have a, we have to have a place to have a voting hole, et cetera. And since there's no real commercial buildings except that little strip in, in 15, we need to have a fire station where somebody can go to vote for that side of town. So, I can tell you, there's not going to be a solution from this board that in any way would not have the two stations. Whether or not the proposal they have adequately addresses those other issues that we're talking about remains to be seen, but that's really what has to be looked at. Are we sizing ourselves to handle Groveland Township's needs from the expenses that the Groveland Township taxpayers are paying, or are we actually funding more service than we need so that we can take care of a bunch of other communities that are in a much better position to fund their own needs than we are? And it's hard to argue that that's not what the case is today because one out of five runs isn't even in Groveland. We do 10 mutual aid runs out to every mutual aid run in, and that is almost 300% of the guideline from the Medical Control Board in Oakland County for what we should be doing. So, I would suggest to you, you look at the raw numbers, it's pretty hard not to say there's got to be something we can do better, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. I have a question about that. If, it's all the mutual aid, by going over to North Oakland Fire Authority, what, other than the name, really, what's, what's going to change, I guess?
Well, what, what could change is looking at, especially that corridor up and down there where there's, you know, a good chunk of runs, and how they actually get covered. I'm not at all convinced that we should necessarily still be doing those. I, I know the original analysis...
But I guess what I'm asking is if it's Groveland Township Fire or North Oakland Fire, that emergency still happened. Someone's going to have to go help them out, is what I'm saying, so...
But it might, it, two things, potentially two things could happen. Work that's not really ours might shift to where it really goes. Or, the other thing is, and this takes some looking at what they call the D cards, which are the runs, the individual run data, when did it happen, how long did they get there, how long did it take them. You may find out that when, as I said, maybe 90, 90, 95% of the calls, I don't know, whatever that number happens, the fee could be handled by this station, and now occasionally they might come and help you if there's another call on Dixie Highway, even if it's in Groveland. So, that's the kind of thing that's likely to work better if it's integrated than if it's not. It doesn't mean that's the only way, one of the alternatives could be, maybe we don't do those runs over there, I don't know.
I guess that's kind of where I was at, is, you know, how...
Listen, I, I don't want anybody to die. I'm not a spring chicken myself, so I would not be making changes to the fire department that I think would say, "Ah, I'm going to kick the bucket, that's the way it goes," you know what I mean? I had them to my house a couple of times.
But what would the change make the, let's say Springfield or Independence, actually step up and take responsibility? I guess that, that's my question.
And, and so here's what happened, in the case of Brandon, they decided, because they were doing so many runs, I think, down in Independence and probably still are, that they fired up that third station, which had been sitting empty because they didn't need it, okay, or didn't need it that much. When they did that, the number of calls we got into Brandon dropped precipitously, okay? Now, we know that, and I know from sitting and talking to the fire chief in Springfield, their anticipation is in about a year they hope to be able to start doing medical runs. When that happens, I'm guessing those 65 runs we're doing, and by the way, NACFA's doing them on the south side of Springfield, okay, additional to ours, those are probably all going to go away. So now you're going to have even fewer runs and less money coming in. I, I ask you, at what point do you say, "I have to look at the fire department and decide, what does it actually need to do for Groveland Township?"
Oh, and I get that, I'm just, I'm just how...
Those runs, those runs will go away.
I could sit in with these meetings...
There's about 30 grand, there's, there's about 30 grand in medical aid, mutual aid runs that we're doing probably have done between Brandon and Springfield that will end up being gone, I think, in about a year. And when they do, that, those runs will be gone, so now there'll be less runs for our people to do, and the 30 grand that comes in from doing those medical runs will also be gone. But our expenses don't go down because if we don't change anything, we still have two stations manned all the time, only instead of doing maybe 2.4 calls on average a day for the whole operation, half that per station, we'll be doing even less than that. That's exactly what the issue is.
Okay, that was just, I was trying to...
Yep, it's a good question. The run still has to be done, and part of it is, who should be doing it?
Yeah.
And who should be paying for it? And that's what the real issue is.
Well, and I, I don't understand all that, but my question, you know, is how do you make them actually do it? You know, just by changing the title of the fire department, that was...
There, there's two things that could happen. If the traffic gets down enough, we could say, "You know what, it's time we start handling our own Groveland Township residents because they're paying our taxes anyway." Okay? And maybe they start handling theirs. That's one possible option, I don't know. We have to see. When does the number get to the point where, what, here's how this township operated for many, many years. We had one station that we kept open all the time, the other one had one guy, and that one would call up for the volunteers, and I'd call people when we need them, and they might meet you at the scene, as they all get those pages, you know, tell them where they got to go. And that might be what we need. That might be what we need if we're not busy underwriting the communities around us that we're paying to take care of right now. I'm a taxpayer too, I've paid plenty of, plenty of taxes over the years I've been here. But I don't like, it's not that I wish any ill on anybody else, I just don't like our residents where we have less than 6,000 people paying to take care of communities that have 14 or 15,000...
That's my question, just like...
So, I'm, I'm sure you have explored this, but you said that if we do merge, then there would potentially be one of our stations unmanned unless...
It might be, it, I don't know that for sure, it might be, or it might be partially manned.
I'm just kind of, just an example. What if, okay, so you guys want to do this in the next 60 days, right, you're going to make a decision, is basically what you're saying? Well, there's going to be a lot of growth in the next year and more demand.
I don't know where you get that.
Well, the ORB part opens, that's going to...
The ORB, first of all, half the ORB part, just so we're clear, is actually in Holly Township as well.
I mean, you said it yourself, to sell the building because there's going to be more...
There's going to be some creative demands.
But I did it at the time.
But that doesn't, that does not happen overnight.
But I'm just saying, I don't understand why there's everything for sale up Dixie Highway, that's opening, there's, businesses coming. I don't understand why now and why not push it out a year? You guys are...
And that might be the answer.
I mean, I, I think that would be fair, because...
Pushing it out a year might be the answer, but the issue is, we still have to address it. The only thing that changes in that whole scenario then is, potentially, the only thing that changes is, well, maybe instead of manning station, what we call one on Dixie Highway, maybe that's, and I'm not saying this is the answer, but it's a possibility, maybe the answer is, we man it part of the time. And then if the traffic actually materializes, because I can tell you, it took four years from the test events on the township property to actually get the DNR to buy it, and John Noes was just in my office this morning to tell me, the opening, so you can get it first, of the ORB part, guess what, is delayed again for about the 12th time to the end of July, okay? So, will there be growth? I think there will be inevitably, and a lot of that growth will actually be on the Holly part of Dixie Highway going up north towards 106. Some of it will be down here, probably up the Grinch Hall Road. And so maybe the answer is, well, maybe we run it the way it is now, it's costing us money, but we run it that way for a year, and then maybe we throttle it back until we actually see what the growth and the demand is, and then we can staff it up. Addison Township's roughly our size has two stations, they only man one of them all the time. The other one is just for the on-call guys to go on when they need it for a backup call. They are in the same situation we are because they have two crews, but they're in one building. And the reason they're in the same situation, and this is a common joke around supervisors' lunching table, they don't call it mutual aid, they call it mooch-ful aid, because Addison Township does a ton of runs down into Oxford and, and Oakland Township. And Oakland Township's one of the wealthiest townships in the entire county, they got them $8 million homes in there, okay? If you ask people off the side what happens, they'll say, "Oakland Township," you can go in and say, "I need a brand new truck and I need $400,000 for it to give to you a drop of a D." If you say, "I need to add two more firefighters," you can't get them to do it. Why? Because Addison's doing a bunch, a ton of medicals into them. This is not a problem that is unique to Groveland Township, but I can't fix Addison or anybody else's. Our job here in this board is to fix our problems so we have a solution that works going forward. So what you're suggesting, I agree. I think we're going to see some growth, but I don't think it's going to happen in a year or two. It's going to take quite a while for that to get built up.
I know.
You know?
I'm just not allowing it up there, so...
That's right. I think it's, I think it's gold, but it ain't out of the ground yet, right? And, and I do think we're going to have it. So I think you, you've exactly hit it on the head. I think you don't make snap decisions that have radical ramifications. I think we need to make sure that we keep station two basically staffed the way it is for at least a year, and ironically, that's the same position that Chief Mason's taken, okay? So, I think everybody's kind of, in a roundabout way, on the same page. I, I think even NACFA thinks, you keep the station exactly the way it is for a year. The question is, how do you best handle the traffic after that year when you've had a chance to really dig into it and see how you can do it, and how do you make sure you have the ability that as the growth does eventually happen, because I think it's going to take 10 or 20 years for us to see it all built out, how do you make sure you have the capability to handle that growth? And I think we can by keeping that station. That's one of the reasons, when the residents last time said, "We don't want station two closed," station one, I keep on doing it, the one on Dixie, closed. We decided, we realized we needed it for voting place anyway, I got to have a place to house the state police, if I need a vote, might as well put a small station on it anyway.
We still want to vote here.
So, I think that's going to happen. I'm, I, Nicole, I think you're right on point, and that's, that's what we've really been saying, what, what we've had a hard time getting people to say is, they have a gut emotional reaction that, "Don't touch my fire department, whatever you do, just give them more money and let them do it." And I think anybody that would look at what's going on here in a rational way would say, you cannot look at a 58% drop in activity with zero cut in manpower, zero hours less, okay? And the fact that you're still doing 20% of the work you have left, out of your township anyway, and say, "There's got to be a better way to do it," and that's what we're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to let the residents know or did you turn off what?
Absolutely, yeah, we said that before, and there were some people that said, "Oh, they pulled a surprise meeting." No, we didn't. On November's agenda, we had published, we're going to talk about the fire department review and set a date for December, and, and we did. So then a bunch of people came and said, "Oh, they're trying to sneak another meeting." No, we didn't. Don't take my word for it, go to the website, look up the November agenda, you'll see, it was right on there, discuss fire department review. And that's exactly, and we did it a whole month ahead of time so people would know. You will know exactly what it is. I don't know if we'll quite make it for this January meeting because that's, I think, a week from today, okay? But it'll be pretty close to that. So if we don't have it at January's meeting, we'll pick a date when we think we'll have the last of the information, and we'll put it on the sign, we'll put it on the door, and we'll put it on the website so that people know, and they can come in here when we go through the two analyses and what we decide to do. Nobody has been doing this in a dark corner without anybody knowing. And Chief Mason certainly has known what's going on because he's been involved for a year with Teresa and I putting that stickboard together, so if, if you think, I, I would have to say, if you think we looked at all that stuff and then just went, "Hmm, we need a couple hundred grand, okay," and that was going to be the end of it, you have to be kidding yourself. Okay, thank, these are good questions, I appreciate it.
Uh, my name is Lisa Case Nocci, I live on Burke Road. I'm a little confused as to who decides what runs station one and two are going to cover. You know, who decides they're going to go to Rose Township? I mean, is that done here, or is, as you said, the 1,200 building saying, "Oh, Groveland is going to do..."
Done here.
"It's done here." So what is stopping here from saying, "Rose Township, figure your own stuff out"?
You mean Springfield.
Springfield or any other, yeah, any other municipalities that Groveland is going to...
Well, I'm not sure you can legally deny doing mutual aid if you have an ambulance available. What happens is, if you, if you're down to one ambulance, I think you can tell them, "I don't have a spare ambulance to spare right now, I can't do your mutual aid," okay? But if you have, and, and to the best of my knowledge, we don't ever send one out of town if we don't have, if it will leave us with no ambulances here. I've tried to make it very clear to the chief now, on the previous one, I better never hear about somebody dying here because we're running down to Springfield to take care of somebody else. I don't wish them ill, but that is not my responsibility, mine is for the residents here.
Exactly. Now, is there a way, because I know if you're uninsured, that ambulance bill, that bill has to be paid.
It has to be billed, you're right.
Exactly. Is there any way, and I don't mean this to put any exertion on anybody in this situation, but, you know, if you come to my house and I'm paying taxes on it and I don't pay that ambulance bill?
Well, what you have to do is, by law, we have to bill everybody. We have it, okay? If we don't bill our own residents, we can't bill anybody. Then we don't have a $200,000 problem, we have a $450,000 problem, okay? So, but what we have is an appeal process, and the chief's pretty familiar, he knows what the guidelines are on it. If a resident is legitimately unable to get money from Medicare or from their insurance, you know, you can claim a hardship and then the board can decide to waive the fee for it, and we've done that quite frequently for some of our residents where they don't have any. But if you have it, you have got an obligation to first either submit it to your insurance if you have it, and we have a higher propensity here for residents that are 65 and older, we have a higher number of them, so most of them are on Medicare, you have to submit it to Medicare. Now, to give you an insight, an ambulance run, a typical ambulance run that might happen, or let's say it's an accident on the freeway, we send somebody out to pick them up and it's, for lack of a better phrase, all the whistles and buzzers of whatever you can do in a medical run, okay? That might be an $800 run, and typically, an insurance company will pay that, okay? If you have a Medicare person and you get a run on it, I don't care if your name is God, you're going to get billed, but you're only going to get...
Fifty dollars?
No, you get about, it's about 200 bucks for the run, okay? At 200 bucks, I'm telling you, we're not coming even remotely close to averaging the cost. The average, when you put all of the different runs together, the insurance ones, the non-pays, everything, we average about $424 per medical run. And, and I'm telling you, that's not enough to cover the staffing requirements. So if you have a second station and it really doesn't have that many calls, you might artificially divide a lot, but you really don't have enough that you need it that often, you become the repository for everybody else to call for mutual aid, and I think that's exactly what you're seeing in Groveland Township right now.
I understand that, and, and I understand the insurance, I've assisted in writing policies for school districts.
These are good questions, I'm glad you're asking.
Thank you. Um, I still, I just, um, I, there's got to be some way, and I'm not saying that Groveland doesn't need tweaking, by any means, there's always room for improvement, even if you're God. I mean, there are things that can change.
I differ on that one, but other than that, I agree with you.
Things, you know, I, I understand things can change things, but I'm, I'm just really having problems getting past other municipalities, you know?
Utilizing us to that extent.
Ten, that ten, you know, you've got 10 mutual aid runs to them, to their one year.
Yes, we, we received 14, or 12 or 14 for the year, we did 143, okay? You have problems with it? That is exactly what has been the cause of all of this discussion, right? Only unfortunately, a lot of people didn't even want to ask. The first meeting that came up, we had people say, "Just raise the village to five. Who cares? We should be building more stations." I can't think of anything that is farther off point than that. Our new builds in this township in the last ten years have dropped eighty-three-point-five percent. We haven't had one new subdivision or one new site condo, which looks like a sub, in the entire township in ten years now. Not one. We only build about five-point-three homes a year.
No, why?
That's nothing. And the point of that was to say, we're not, sometimes you could say, if you're like Novi, where they're putting up all these new subdivisions, we'll kind of grow our way out of the problem. We'll, we'll get enough new business because all the building to cover. That's not going to happen here. It's never going to happen here. We're never going to be ten or twelve thousand people even, or anywhere close to that. I think it would be a miracle if we ever get to seven, or sixty-five-hundred, really. But seven probably at the outer limits, and that might take forty or fifty years. SimCOG says, that's who does the forecasting for Southeast Michigan, they have said, "Groveland, we think you will be at, um, at about, no, it's less than fifty-seven, forty." Which is smaller than we were in the year two thousand, in the year twenty-forty. So it's, it's not like we haven't done our due diligence and said, "We need to not only look at this, but is there a way we can outgrow it?" Well, that came back pretty clear and concise. You're not going to outgrow this, okay? Is, is it our runs that are causing all this, or is it somebody else's? I think it's pretty clear. It's other people's runs that are causing us to be in this over-cost budget, really. So the, the question is, it really, it all boils down to, what are the options? And I think you're negligent in your responsibility as a manager if you don't look at all the options. If we had just done what some of the people said, well, we were first discussing this, we would have just said, "Let's not even look at it. Just raise the village to five thousand. All right, let's build a couple of stations or something," which is ridiculous.
That might look as to why you did that.
Yeah, which is ridiculous. So I, I appreciate questions and comments like we're getting today because I think it lets you understand what's going on. But you have to have people that will sit down long enough to listen and get past the emotion. And I know this is hard to believe, but I'm telling you, if you saw it on the internet, it don't mean it's true.
I agree. I agree. I guess why I'm here asking.
And they're good questions.
I come to the source. Is there anything residents can do to, I don't want to say fix the situation, but to maybe correct it?
It, 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 it's, I, I wish to God there was, you know? It's like when they tried to take, one of the multiple times, they tried to take the state police detachment away from us. It was really firing up the whole resident base. They got everybody to flood Lansing with emails and stuff that helped turn that around. That was a big part of it. But here, I, we cannot go, for example, and say, "Well, don't do the runs in those other townships." If you've got it, you have to do it. What we have to do is figure out, how do we most cost-effectively match the resources in the township to the actual demand that we have? And can we control that demand so that we're not having a case where we're easily used to do everybody else's work? And that's, and that's what we're wrestling with.
While providing benefits and a potential raise that is well needed.
I understand. You know, and, and again, I am from the public school system, thirty-five years recently retired.
Same kind of things they had to go through.
Absolutely. And privatizing does not work. Does not work.
Yeah, well, just so we're clear though, there was nothing that was, this, this was not, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but none, none of the things we're looking at. I know some people have made it sound like, "Well, you're going to outsource this to NACFA. They're going to take all your equipment, and then we're going to be left with nothing." It, it's not that kind of an arrangement. It is, if, if that's the solution, it is an equal partner in the process. If there's three communities in it, all three of them have one-third say in what happens. The, there's no advantage to anybody in it to just be taking equipment from somebody and doing it. Plus, I would never let a deal go down that way anyway. Even if I did, I've already done research that there's all kinds of stipulations and requirements you put in that says, "We get everything back that we brought in. Nothing stays behind." It is to their advantage, potentially, as ours. I don't know if that's the answer. But I'm telling you that there are statements that say, "Well, they're just going to take all your equipment if you merge with them, and then we'll be left here with nothing." Those are ridiculous.
That's what you write in the policy.
Pardon?
It is what you write in the policy.
And I've already talked to Council Attorney, if he were to go down that path, he said, "You can write anything you want in there." And, and I would never let, the, the confusion comes because one of the things that a fire authority does is remove the potential for litigation from the township. When it's a separate fire authority, if somebody decides to sue it, it's the fire authority they sue, not the township, okay? And so they transfer the physical equipment and the buildings into their name. But you write into the agreement on those that if you ever decide to get out, you get everything back out that you put in.
There are stipulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, these are the best questions I'm having, really. I commend you all because if people would ask these questions, you would have a much clearer position. I've seen a lot of stuff on the internet, and mostly what I've seen has got no substance at all in the truth.
I have a question. Is there any way that you can bill the other-
No. All we can do is bill the recipient of the run, and we do that, you know? And we go through the same collection process. We can't even make it, if they don't pay, can we go to the municipality and, we can't even do that. So the, the, the secret to making this work really is figuring out, how do you match the resource to what your community actually needs? And then, and then test that and see if it works, and get your costs in line. And that is essentially what I think Chief Mason's proposal is in rough form, what he and I talked about, and I think you discussed it with him too, Jim. So maybe that's the answer, but at this stage, we've spent two years looking at this. I understand it's emotional, but this needs to be done. If I were sitting on the other side of this bench right now and my words, "And I'm not even going to look at anything. Just raise the taxes. I don't care what they say," I would say, "You need to get out of here." And I've been here twenty-four years, and that's never been what I've done. I have never done that. I get, I do get personally upset when people say, "Oh, you're lying, or you're going to do this." I have never done anything like that. And my record stands on. This township has better resources now than it's ever had. It has better roads by far than it's ever had because I've gotten more federal grant money dollars in here than this township ever saw in its history. It's in better financial position. We have all of our obligations funded and paid for, and I'm just trying to make sure we're doing the right thing going forward and not wasting money. And I honestly think that's what the people, even if it's not who you see in an audience, I think that's what the vast majority of the citizens in this township want. You take a look at something and you tell us what the facts are. And I've never had anybody come up to me and said, "Oh, your facts are all hooey." Because they're not. I don't make them up. They either come from the auditor, the state of Michigan, or the fire department. Chief Mason worked with us, and he's confirmed every number we put in there. He, he said, "I'm not disputing. Any of the numbers are all right." It's not like I just say, "I think this is the number. Let's put it in there. This is what we'll tell them." I, I go back and I validity check each one of those. The hardest part to do the checking on, though, is as you said, when you ask, "Why don't you want to do this or that or the other thing?" And the only answer is, "It just doesn't feel good," you know? Or, "I don't, I don't know why. I don't like it." Those are hard answers to put dollar amounts on and say, "Do we want people to spend two, three hundred thousand dollars a year for something that nobody can actually eat, touch, feel, or give me an honest reason why we're not doing it?" And that's what we're trying to get through. I understand those issues, but they're very hard to quantify, and that's what we're doing. Trying to do that. Okay? Thank you. Anything else? Okay, it's not a motion. It's adjourned. It'll be in order. Is there a second?
No, second is-
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, word's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.